You are wonderful.
Try some, pass it down.
That's pretty good stuff.
It's not that I don't want to eat it, I can't have the exact amount of sugar in it. They're tasty.
No, sorry, you can leave it down here.
There are a couple of things, there are a couple of things I do real well. That's one. Now you can guess what the other is. I'll leave that up to you. And get a whole bunch of candy, I don't want to have it. Okay. Are we setting a time limit, Teddy? Hmm. How about eight? How about eight? Yeah, I told you. How about eight? Let the BCC, let the BCC get this crap. Oh, yes, they are. Mm-huh.
If you would, please join us for the invocation and a pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the Lord, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Lord, we thank you for today. We thank you for the chance to come together, Lord, to discuss the business of Walton County. I pray that you'll give us all patience and give us discernment, Lord, and help us to figure out what, what direction to go and what's best for the citizens of Walton County. Pray that you'll be with us and lead us and guide us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public meeting. If you would, please be sure to turn off your phones or silence them. That way, we don't have about, it looks like 300 phones going off tonight. Make things run a little bit smoother. Couple other things, just of business to take care of real quick. We will have a nine o'clock time certain ending for this meeting tonight. If we're not finished, we will reconvene at the time we determine at that time. First...
Is this meeting being videoed?
No. Are we being, we are being videoed, right? This thing is being carried live streams, so keep that in mind. Be aware that, that everybody up here has had an opportunity to receive all of the emails and notes and messages that have been sent in. And we've all had a chance to read them. I know I've read every one, except for ones I was handed just a few minutes ago. Everybody has a right to be heard, as you know. This is a quasi judicial meeting. I would also like to ask, though, that we not say the same thing 300 times. If you don't like green, it's not necessary for everybody to stand up and say they don't like green. So, so understand that. Saying the same thing over and over is not going to do anything but take up time. The planning commission, I think as everybody is aware, is charged with hearing these things and hearing all these applications, making determinations on whether it meets the land development code and the comp plan, and making recommendations to the board of county commissioners. We're not making any final decision here tonight. That's not what our role is. Our role is to listen and to make recommendations. So, please keep that in mind and be understanding of that. The first item on the agenda would be minutes, we have minutes from the January 8th meeting. We would need a motion in a second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favors?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Are there any announcements, Mac?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay. The only item on the agenda is redesign of Chateau 30A, so we'll go ahead and begin.
Brian Underwood.
Brian Underwood, for Walton County will introduce this project.
Uh, anyone... Anyone who anticipates testifying or speaking to the board tonight, would you please stand and raise your right hand? I need to swear you in, this is a quasi judicial hearing. Do you solemnly swear or firm the testimony we'll give before this board will be the truth? We'll ask you to please state your name when you get to the podium and also state that you have been sworn. And commissioners, if any, other than the emails you've talked about, have you received any other ex parte communications about this project?
No, sir.
Have, have any of you formed an opinion about the project based on the emails that would prevent you from rendering a fair and impartial decision?
No, sir.
And we'll make the emails part of the record.
Tim, real quick, before you get started. I hope everybody saw that there's sign up sheets at the desk right out here in the lobby. If you would, if you intend to speak, please fill one of those out. It's not that you can't speak without doing that, but it makes it a lot easier for Carrie when she's doing minutes and keeping records for us to have names and stuff to, to refer back to. Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, one more instruction. We have a court reporter here tonight. Because I've practiced law for almost 29 years, I'm very protective of them. If you start interrupting each other, or we have more than one person talking at one time, I will shut everybody down and we'll start again. We're going to protect the record by making sure she is only hearing one person at a time.
Along those lines, if you do intend to speak, please, like Mark said, don't blurt out. You must be recognized by the chair and/or to speak, and when you come up to speak, please address the commission, not, not somebody sitting behind you. Okay? Go ahead, Tim.
Thank you. Brian Underwood, Planning and Development Services. I have been sworn. This is a major development order application submitted by Jenkins Engineering Incorporated, requesting approval to develop a 59,256 square foot, four-story, 90-room, limited lodging inn, and a 660 square foot retail space on a 2.4 acre parcel with a future land use designation of village mixed use. Project is located on County Road 30A, north of Williams Street, identified by parcel And I will ask the developer and their agent to provide some additional details.
Good evening. My name is David Theriak. I represent the applicant. Before I begin with some opening remarks, I have a set of documents that I would like to hand out to each commissioner. Mr. Chairman, if that's appropriate?
Yeah, just give them the, Carrie over there. Okay, you are aware that anything that you give to us is part of the public record?
Absolutely. I'm going to do say that.
Thank you.
Exhibit A1.
Actually, Carrie, I'm going to do it a little differently, given the number of documents. We're going to make this petition exhibit 1 through 17 as identified.
Just hold the extras down there. Just hold any extras.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'd need you to state you're going to accept it into evidence.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, thank you for accepting our exhibits 1 through 17 into evidence. I'll spend just a couple seconds walking through so you know what you have here, in case there's any documents that you want to refer to during the evening. Tab 1 is just the staff report. Tab 2 is the future land use map that shows where the site is, the village mixed use on three directions, and then you've got the institutional to the west. Tab 3 is an aerial, and the site is, it reproduced a little bit dark, but the site's almost dead center. Seagrove storage is due north of the site. Tab 4 is a site plan. And we have our engineer, Scott Jenkins, and he'll be going through the site plan in more detail. Site 5, or excuse me, tab 5 is our preservation plan. Tab 6, or exhibit 6, is basically our stormwater plan. Tab 7 is the minor development order that the county approved and issued for this property, for Chateau 30A, March 17th, 2014. It was for 28 dwelling units. Tab 8, exhibit 8, is the technical review committee report for last year's development order. Tab 9 is the development order for the Seagrove Beach Climate Control Storage Facility. That's the development in the project due north of its property. This development order was approved by the county commission on April 6, 2004. Tab 10 is a printout from the Walton County Property Appraiser. It is, if you see, there's a parcel in red, that's the storage facility due north. Tab 11, it's another printout from the Walton County Property Appraiser. The parcel in red is the subject parcel, Chateau 30A. And then the next few exhibits are just some excerpts that I think may be useful during tonight's hearing. Exhibit 12 is the county's comprehensive plan policy from the future land use element, L-1.3.8, and it's the county's regulations regarding property designated as village mixed use center. Exhibit 13 is an excerpt from your land development code, which also addresses village mixed use. This heading is for all mixed use centers. When you turn the page, it says Chapter 2, Page 23 of 77, and the very next page is where the village mixed use center regs start. So, you have both the comp plan and the land development code provisions regarding VMU. Tab 14 is an excerpt from the conservation element of Walton County's comprehensive plan. It's a policy C-1.11.1, deals with the buyout provisions for preservation. Tab 15 is the companion regulation from the land development code, addresses the buyout for preservation. It starts at 40602 on the first page, and then you go two pages back and you get actually into the, the code's requirements for being able to buy out preservation. Tab 16 is an excerpt from the Walton County Comprehensive Plan. It's from the future land use element. It's policy L-1145. It addresses the county's ability to allow an applicant to use proportionate fair share to address concurrency issues. Tab 17 is an excerpt also from the Walton County Comprehensive Plan. It's from the transportation element that also authorizes an applicant to use proportionate fair share to address concurrency when a road is, is deficient. Lawyers don't present evidence, so I'm going to be very brief. Mr. Scott Jenkins will present evidence. He's got some exhibits. He's going to talk about the site. He's going to talk about what we've done. But I, I would want to just preface tonight by saying thank you. There's a lot of people here tonight. This is, this has a lot of interest. And this isn't your first quasi judicial hearing. So, as you know, whether there's 100 people for or 100 people against, your duties and your obligation is to determine whether the application complies with all the requirements of the comprehensive plan and the land development code. And if there's a petition with 1,000 folks saying yes or 1,000 folks saying no, that's not competent substantial evidence under Florida law. You're, you're obligated to weigh the evidence that you hear through witnesses to determine if, in fact, this project meets the comprehensive plan and the land development code, and I respectfully submit that it does. At this juncture, I'll turn it over to Scott, our engineer. I would like the ability to have a brief closing at the end of the night when we're done to basically wrap up, and I also would like the ability, in case some of the neighbors raise some issues or some concerns, that we would be able to address that in rebuttal as well, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
So, unless you have some questions, I mean, I'll turn it over to Scott. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Scott Jenkins with Jenkins Engineering, and I have been sworn in. As David did an introduction, we're here to introduce the project before you, which is the redesign of Chateau 30A. Just to give you a brief overview of what we've done so far and where the site is, this is an aerial of the area. This is County Road 30A. The site is here, which is basically bounded by Seagrove Baptist Church on the west side, Seagrove Storage on the north, some additional restorations here, and a commercial retail strip on this side. South of 30A are several vacant and other additional VMU parcels in this area that are yet to be developed. A little further to this direction is Greenwood Park subdivision, and then there's another...
Just a minute, Scott. Are you saying they can't hear out there?
Yeah.
Okay, you need to speak into the microphone, Scott.
Okay, I'm sorry. There's another proposed development that's just to the other side of us on this side. So, basically, that's the, that's the location. The lake is just here, in this location.
You might move that closer to you. We don't want to see that attorney all the time anyway, it's okay.
This is a future land use map associated with the project where you can see the, all the adjacent future...
Just a minute, just a minute. Yes, sir. I don't, I mean, it was just backup and going over the site plan. I don't think he needs to do that.
I, I can just do it briefly, if you want to.
Go ahead, please.
Again, I just described where the location of the site is and what we're bounded by. We're basically on 30A. We have a church to the, to the west. We have a self-storage warehouse to the north, additional storage and retail office space to the east side, and vacant VMU on the south side of the property. This is a future land use map of the, of the area, and as you, as you can see, all the areas in pink are the village mixed use, future land use. The blue is institutional where the church is. You have a neighborhood infill. Residential preservation areas are over here, and, but basically, you can see the VMU polygon that, that we deal with in the county, and we're sort of in the center of that. This is the proposed site plan for the development, and you can see, this is the hotel site. Our parking is on this side. The, there's, there's 90 rooms in this, so we meet the parking requirements associated with this use. This is a small proposed specialty retail building, which is separate from the hotel here. Our access is on 30A. There, there is basically buffering around the outside edges that we'll talk about in just a second. For a VMU parcel, the things that are important that I want to hit on, basically, are that we have a maximum building height to four stories or 50 feet, which we're below, we're four stories and we're below 50 feet on the proposed site. We have a maximum floor area ratio allowed of 2.0, when our proposed is actually .57, so we're well below that, that number. We have a maximum impervious surface ratio that's allowed of 85%, and we're at 56.7% of impervious surface. So, we meet all the requirements that's set forth in the land development code for, for developing within a VMU center. The next drawing, or figure, is the drainage plan that we have for the development. And as you can see, we have a pretty, an extensive system of exfiltration structures that catch everything and that are in the parking areas. And this is actually designed to retain the 100-year vent. We also have a discharge here where there's an existing culvert if we have an event for higher than that, but we do retain the 100-year vent without any discharge. So, we're over and above. We also meet all the requirements for stormwater within a coastal dune lake watershed, which is one and a half times the normal quality treatment. And the last figure is basically our proposed preservation plan. You can see that the majority of the site is a habitat that was determined by staff to require preservation. Our preservation is located around the buffers, primarily along the side adjacent to the church to try to provide some additional buffer there, and along the frontage of 30A here to try to buffer from 30A. If, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Scott? Yeah, I do. Scott?
Yes, ma'am.
During the last, not this last rain event, but in 2000 and... I'm sure it's, I think everybody can hear me. During the last year, in 2013 rain event? How much flooding did that area, not just your piece of property, but did that whole area incur?
You know, I don't know that off the top of my head, but I think, I had heard that areas closer to the lake, at the lower areas, had significant flooding.
How many are these single rooms? How many do they each room sleep?
They, they are single rooms. I would assume that, I, I really don't know the answer to that. How many?
Do they have bunk beds?
I'd have to defer that to Charles, but he's saying no, so no.
Okay, so it would be...
It's a standard...
Two queens would be the maximum sleeping area and one? Four people? No sleeper sofas? Sure. I don't know.
Approach the microphone, yes. First of all, identify yourself, where you're sworn.
Charles Rigdon, and I am sworn. Our mix is a typical Hampton Inn mix. We have a few more suites, king suites, which have two king beds in them and a sofa, about 40% of that. The other is standard king rooms.
So, those would sleep six?
Possibly.
And how many of those are there?
There's 38 out of 90.
Okay. 38 out of 90 would sleep six. The other...
Could sleep six.
Would sleep six, but the other ones? The ones besides those 38? What's the maximum the others will sleep?
There's a mix of, can you hand me those plans? Quite frankly, I think it's two-thirds are king rooms with...
No sleeper sofa in the king room?
Can I answer? Two, two-thirds of those are queen, which would just have two beds in them. And then the other third of them are, then the other third would be what they call a, a king sofa, which has a king bed with a sofa sleeper, and they would, you know, sleep four people.
And how many parking places do you have?
I'll, I'll let him answer that.
Right. We, we actually have 101 spaces here for, or 102, I'm sorry. Here, the, the requirement for a hotel room is 1.1 per room, according to the land development code, and we meet that requirement.
Okay. That's all I have for right now.
Commissioners, if anybody has any questions for them?
I don't have any questions, but when...
Sally, I'm sorry. Put that microphone up to you. Thank you.
When we're in a conversation between a, you know, a commissioner and, and a speaker, if the audience would stay quiet because I cannot hear when they all start making comments after, after a comment's made or we're in a discussion?
Thank you very much. Anything else for the presenter at this time?
Mr. Chairman, we have nobody else that we're calling at this juncture.
Okay. Staff? Do you have anything else to present?
No further comments at the present time. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move to public comments. Let me get out my book here.
I ask a question of staff.
Sure.
I'd like to know, of staff, I'd like to know where the buyout money goes.
Yes, ma'am. I understand that there are special accounts that are managed by the county administration that these specific buyout fees are deposited into. As to the distribution from those accounts, I have no knowledge or information on that.
But they're, to your knowledge, they're all set up in separate accounts?
That's my understanding.
Sidewalk account? Okay.
That's my understanding.
All right. Thank you.
Just to clarify, any preservation buyout monies go into a discrete account for that particular purpose. It's not segmented like impacted sections of roadway would be with a proportionate fair share payment.
Can I ask you a question? Okay. Kathy Kojm?
Kathy with C. And last name, please go. K O J M.
Have you been sworn, Kathy?
I have been sworn. My name's Kathy Kojm. My concerns, and thank you for this time and opportunity, my concerns are, since it's a short-term, I'll call it rental, option, as far as traffic, there'll be more traffic upon 30A because there's more turnover upon, you know, whenever they check out, usually three to four days. And the other concern is water drainage runoff. I was told it was underneath the parking lot. Can somebody tell me about that?
We'll, we'll have them address that. Scott, make sure you address that, okay?
I live in Gulf Shore Manor, which is in Seagrove, and we are not even half-built out, and we have 400 lots just in our subdivision. And as a natural progression of people buying lots and building on them is a slow process. It's not like all of a sudden, instant 90 rooms, six in some, two, four in another, three in another. It's, seems like a big impact on 30A, which is a problem at noon time, as everybody knows. So, thank you very much for the opportunity. Hopefully, you'll answer the question.
Okay. Mr. Jenkins, why don't you go ahead and answer that question?
This proposed stormwater system is exfiltration that's underneath the parking lots. It's caught in some concrete catch basins that basically go down into what's called an exfiltration bed, which is a system of perforated corrugated pipes, which are surrounded by gravel bed, basically. And the, and we did an extensive job, because we do know that there are stormwater problems in the area, and we, we actually did above and beyond what the, what the code requirements would be. But yes, that's, that's correct. It's an exfiltration system.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
What are the corrugated pipes wrapped in? Because I'm real familiar with that system. And if it gets sand and dirt down in the pipes, pipes are stopped up, they don't drain, and you can't take up your parking to get to it every time it stops up. So, what are your corrugated pipes going to be wrapped with that will prevent the sand from storms to getting down and to clogging up the exfiltration drains?
Well, we have a system that has basically a sock pipe that goes around it. It's, it's filter fabric more than...
I have one, too.
Yeah, and then we have filter fabric also around the outside of the gravel.
What type filter fabric?
I'd have to look at the specifications specifically, but it's basically the black fiber, fiber filter fabric.
And what, do you know the warranty on it?
I don't, no, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question about traffic, Scott. I know you do the traffic concurrency. How many trips does this add to 30A a day?
59 PM peak hours is the way the county looks at it right now.
Okay, so, all right. And that's a big concern of a lot of people, almost every letter that I had, that I read today and over the week. I guess there's a buyout, is that how that works? There's a buyout? Thank you. David Bailey?
My comments have two areas of focus. One, I have been sworn.
Okay.
Yes, sir. The first one is, is that I believe the project fails to meet Land Development Code Section 2.01.3, which has to do with compatibility. I'll quote just a few sentences out of that. This is a quote, "The intent of the mixed use is to promote an integration of land uses, not a separation." The section continues that the project shall, the development shall demonstrate effective alternatives, alternatives to buffering. This project, I believe, fails to meet those requirements because two sides of the project feature a retaining wall that surround the project. That wall is as high as five feet in places. The apparent reason for this wall is to create enough vertical dimension to install the stormwater exfiltration system that was just discussed. I want to point out specifically that the property on its eastern border, as it approaches the south end of the parcel, is five feet, actually slightly over five feet, if you go from the curb of the parking lot over the adjacent parcel. I didn't see a dimension on the drawings that describe exactly how horizontally far away that is, but it looked to be less than 10 feet. Second area in, within my first point, the lighting is not compatible. The project features fairly typical high-mass type lighting. The drawings that I looked at indicate that the lighting is over five-foot candles in places, and to give you an idea, that's not uncommon in the interior of a home. That's, that's what you would try to achieve in a hallway within a home. It's, to my knowledge, the only places you see that on 30A are the two gas stations, if they're, if they're pump locations. I believe that when the parking lot is full of vehicles, it would be reasonable to expect it to be a threat to the dark sky that we value very much because of the reflectance off the vehicles. The second area that I believe is an issue is the traffic study clearly indicates that 30A is already overburned, overcapacity in this location, and the numbers I've read in the traffic study indicated, the gentleman just mentioned 59 new trips. I believe that's based on an 85% occupancy at the hotel, not 100% occupancy, so we could expect there to be periods where it was greater than that. And the two segments adjacent to the property of 30A are already overcapacity by 547 trips, so this project would increase that to 570 overcapacity, and the other segment nearby was already 566 trips over, and this would increase it to almost 600, 594. I am not all that familiar, while I am a professional planner. I'm not all that familiar with exactly how the payout system works, and I'm guessing that the audience would probably appreciate a brief explanation of that if someone could offer it. My concern is, is that it appears that if we keep accepting money in lieu of meeting traffic concurrency, that we're headed towards an expansion of 30A is the only way we could meet it. I can't think that if we continue to do this with every undeveloped property that we would be able to use trolleys or that type of thing to get out of this, so I hope the planning commission, if you feel it's in your purview, would consider where we're headed with that aspect of the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim, would you like to address as far as the questions there?
Yes, sir. The compatibility standard includes a radius of quarter of a mile. The project is to primarily be compatible with abutting uses. That's the standard specific to village mixed use. I would, trying to get this photograph, aerial photograph going again here. As you can see, the development existing to the east of the parcel is, is commercial and storage in use, and I believe that the proposed development is compatible with that storage and commercial use. There is existing commercial in a storage facility immediately to the north of the proposed development. The church is an institutional use to the west of the proposed development, and the developer is leaving the onsite vegetation preservation along the western property boundary. The site is heavily wooded, and there will be approximately an 18-foot wide strip of naturally vegetated area existing along that western boundary, and the parking facilities for the project are on the east portion of the development site, which is away from the church. To the south, there's Highway 30A, and there are some additional village mixed-use parcels existing to the south of Highway 30A. You can see the village mixed-use parcels there, south of the project site, so based on these existing uses, I feel that the project is compatible with the community.
Okay. Thank you. Can you, here's another question about the buyout.
Right. The, the...
Before some fair share.
Proportional fair share impact amount has been calculated, as we've mentioned, based on the trips to be generated and expected through the project. That fee is $159,600. That would be required to be paid prior to receipt of a building permit by the developer.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Did you have something back? Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could address the lighting comment. The speaker indicated that a five-foot candle indication was shown on the plans at the property line. Section 5.09.02 requires a maximum of 10 in a, adjacent to a residential area, a maximum of 15 adjacent to a public right-of-way, and they're showing five, significantly less than the maximums the code mandates.
Thank you. Ms. Hoffman, if you would state your name and whether or not you have been sworn?
Yes, my name is Janet Hoffman, and yes, I have been sworn. My comments are a little more emotional than technical, as the previous speaker, but I think that there is a place for that, especially the 30A community. 10 years ago, my husband and I drove 1,200 miles to search for the perfect beach house. We are from Long Island, New York. You don't hear many New Yorkers coming down to this area. We passed strip malls, hotel chains, and chain stores. We did not stop. We arrived at Seagrove Beach, Summer's Edge, which is south of the area that they are talking about building the Hampton Inn. There are plenty of homes in that area. It is the most beautiful, magical community, the whole 30A community. When I tell New Yorkers that I am going to Florida, many of them say, "Okay, you know, whatever," and I say, "No, this is a magical place to live. I do not want that serenity changed one bit. There are plenty of, there is plenty of building going on, there is more traffic, that's going to make even more." I also have a couple of questions. I don't understand where the beach access would be, because coming straight across that road, our homes, you can walk through and get to the beach, so I'm a little concerned about that. And then one of my co-livers outside wanted the answer, the question answered, if there are parking spaces for the residents or renters, or whatever you want to call them at Hampton Inn, but where do the workers park? So is the parking facility enough to, you know, house the workers and the renters staying there? Okay, thank you for your attention, and I hope you preserve 30A.
Thank you.
Thank you.
James Burdo?
James Burdo? I can't read it, or I would. It's B.I. something, from 333 South Gulf Drive. Did we find him? James, I'm not going to pick on you, but I'm going to ask you to just tell your name for the record and state...
Yes, sir. James Bishop, and I have not been sworn in.
You have not, okay.
Please, right hand, Mr. Bishop, would you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this board will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
I'm Jim Bishop. I live around the corner from the project. And this hotel does not fit in anywhere along 30A in that area of the beach. Kind of nervous.
That's okay.
The street right across from me is William Street. It goes all the way down to Eastern Lake Road. The lights from this place will go down William Street, and it'll affect the turtles, the flooding in Brown Street. They have to pump it out every, every time it rains. It's just so many things that it's not compatible to the area, and I appreciate y'all listening, but it's just, it's just not needed there.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that okay? Tell me exactly how close, did you say Brown Street has the flooding in the county pumps every time it rains?
Yes, ma'am.
And how, where, can you show me exactly on one of these maps where Brown Street is?
Okay, Brown Street would be just south and to the west of this project, across...
Across 30A?
Yeah. Also, you know, I mentioned the, the lights. There is another hotel being planned on the west side of the church, and with those two hotels and the limited beach accesses that we have, it's not going to accommodate them. Both of the beach accesses has no parking, and all these people, how they going to get there? It's really too far to walk, really. We're just overcrowded as it is, and when you take several hundred more people from this hotel and several hundred from the other hotel, you know, we're going to have a traffic problem that won't wait. I think it's not only just not compatible, it's a dangerous situation because of the traffic. On Sundays, it's hard to get out even on to 30A from the church, and it just, it's just not needed in our area. There, it can't, we just don't have the room to accommodate it. The flooding in this water has got to go somewhere. The other project says they're going to build an underground water filtration system. Whether or not that works, I don't know, but I know at the church, when it rains, our little area fills up. So I can imagine what it's going to be like when you pave all the area joining to the church.
Thank you.
So the church parking lot floods when it rains?
I wouldn't say floods, but...
Does it put the water on you?
Lot of water. But we do have on the north, on the south and on the east side of the church retention areas, and it is, it is, it fills up, yeah.
Does it, does it overflow the retention areas?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Is Jeff Floyd in here? Just go ahead and let, are you Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Okay. Jeff Floyd, you'll be next. That's where you can start making your way this way.
I apologize. I was out in South Forty out there. Also apologize for my voice. I've had a little cold, and I think I can keep it going, but please...
Mr. Wilson, have you been sworn?
I have been sworn.
Okay, thank you.
I will start by saying that I would have to agree with the more than 9,000 petitioners who have opposed this project, but I want to approach this by dealing with a couple of points that I think provide maybe a broader review of this project and maybe make some additional supporting evidence as to why it should be turned down. One of the things I want to talk about, I want to talk about three things. The planning staff's interpretation of what constitutes mixed use in a VMU land classification. I want to talk about the impact on public facilities of this proposed project, which has been touched on a little bit tonight, but I want to get a little more depth on that, and then maybe offer kind of a recommendation of where we might go from here. I've been a, I've lived on 30A for 13 years. I'm now living in Nilla Beach. I was here before you on the Dollar General project, so it's nice to be back, representing what I think are the interests of the community and the public. Let's talk about how the staff interprets mixed use when they're looking at a VMU development. Staff's position, and they can challenge me if I'm not saying this right, is to require two uses to constitute a mixed use consistent with the intent and purpose of VMU. In doing so, they have rendered opinion that a 90-room limited lodging facility meets the intent and purposes of VMU because the applicant has included 660 square feet of retail. Now, you've heard what the intent and the purposes of village mixed use is from an earlier speaker. Staff would tell you that they don't really have any real guidelines from the code or really absent guidelines from this planning commission or the, or the Board of County Commissioners. They really make these interpretations on a case-by-case basis, sometimes good, and I think sometimes bad, bad in this particular case. They're trying to be consistent, so they're a little bit handicapped, but at the same time, to have this particular project before us tonight with 90 limited lodging facility hotel rooms and 660 square feet of retail, and claiming that that mix meets the standards of mixed use for VMU, I think tells me, particularly in this case, that those interpretations have gone off the rails. How is a 90-room hotel with 660 square feet of retail anywhere near close to the intent and purposes of VMU in the Land Development Code? There's no integration of multiple uses, there's no internal capture of traffic. I predict, as a matter of fact, when I looked on the site plan, and I may be wrong, the retail looks like it's located over by the pool behind the fence. That may be right, that may be, that may be wrong, but I would be willing to predict to you that within two years, that retail is going to fail, it's going to be closed, and that space is going to be redeveloped and become part of the hotel project. Consider this, the square footage in the hotel is 59,000-plus square feet. The square footage of the retail is 660 square feet. The retail component is 1.1% of the square footage, and is thus, by staff, is being deemed to mixed uses to be consistent with the purposes of VMU. I just disagree with that. Now, the development community likes VMU, because in residential, they can build 12 units to the acre, and they can build up to 125 lodging units. units to the acre and they can build up to 125 lodging units. But to take advantage of that and to take advantage of those densities, I think they need to be held to the line to comply with the intent and purposes of mixed use within a VMU land classification. Clearly, I don't think that's been done here. I think this project, I don't know the developer, I don't know the gentleman that represents the developer, but from the outside looking in, this looks, this is an example of the lengths to which you're gonna see some applicants go to skirt the mixed use requirement and how county staff's interpretations, sometimes good, sometimes bad, can be complicitous in recommending a project of this intensity that would not otherwise be permitted on 38. So, uh, I think it sets a dangerous precedent. You've got other 38 parcels that are VMU, they're gonna come up for, that have been split off from larger parcels, they're gonna be coming in for applications for development. You're gonna have some teardowns and some rebuilding and reconstruction, and I really think the guidelines need to be clarified and strengthened so we don't have other hearings like we have tonight and argue about what constitutes a viable mixed use project.
Thank you.
And, and let me just say the remedy to that, quite honestly, and this is maybe a little bit draconian, but if you can't come up with good standards as to what constitutes mixed use, then basically if somebody wants to develop in the VMU category and they can't, and they cannot basically convince staff and this commission and the community that it's a viable mixed use, they gotta amend the comp plan, rezone the property, and then comply with the standards of their particular use and come before the public again for examination. Okay. Second point, potential impact of this development on public facilities. You've heard some talk about the beach and I thought I was gonna go last, so I thought I'd have, you would have heard all about that and I'll let other people speak to that. But the drainage flooding, flooding issues, Ms. Harris, you related to it earlier and there's been another, uh, person who's talked about tonight. I think one of the reasons why drainage is kind of a problem is that this parcel, I am told, is on a portion of 38 that is one of 58 critical flooding areas in Walton County. What's that mean? I don't really know, except to say that the county has retained three engineers to assess the drainage issues in this area and along 38 and other places and report back with recommendations and solutions. So I guess it's a big deal in terms of potential liability of the county and I don't think we should forget about that when we're looking at a compli, a, a project of this size and complexity. Traffic impacts, they've been touched on. I'm not a, I'm not a traffic guy and I don't know the level of service. It was, I, I heard the gentleman earlier and I think that's a very good point, but the road is a disaster in the season, which is expanding every year to additional months. There are some possibilities of maybe doing roundabouts on 395 and, uh, Water Sound Parkway, maybe we can do another connector road between 38 and 98. And obviously, there's a possibility of the creation of a public transportation system, but I haven't seen great progress on any of those and I don't know really where we are there. Which brings me to this issue of prop share. I know why it's there. I'm a developer, I've been an executive in a development company, and it's a good principle so that the last guy in doesn't have to pay for widening the bridge because it's his project that trips the threshold. It, it allows the sharing of impacts by people who are developing in the community along a roadway or whatever. But what, what's really happening is here, nobody knows where this prop share money goes, at least the public doesn't. These guys are gonna throw 170,000 in the pot, other people will put money in the pot. What really concerns me, and this is a question and I understand the challenge that you and the county have here, there are very limited ways in which 38 can be improved and I don't know how we can keep throwing trips on that road from major projects like the one this proposed here. And we all put money in the fund and I think at some point, and, and, and this is probably good for everybody, I think the public needs some accountability is, what are their plans for fixing 38? When is it gonna be done? And who's gonna do it? And I know it's the county's responsibility. And, and as a developer, I would hate to have to answer that question, I would hate to ever have it be posed to me, but I think we're getting to the time when there's prob, there're probably not gonna be very many more big projects along 38, I don't think. I think most of the big stuff's been done. This is a big project and there may be other likers that are big, but I think it's time to ask that prop share question. I'll wrap up, 'cause I know I'm taking a little more time.
Yeah, please.
I'll just close up with just a general sense of how I feel about the place and I think a lot of other people do. Our area is referred to by many as the design coast because of the unique array of communities and architecture along 38. I, and I'm sure you all have and others in the audience have, over the course of the last many years, have toured people from all over the world as well as architectural and planning professionals, some elsewhere in the U.S. They come to see this place. They came to, they come to see how it works and what they can learn from it. We've always been an example. Now admittedly, not everything along 38 is spectacular, but I would say in the 13 years since I've been here, most of the projects that have been approved have been, have really been pretty good and should serve as a standard when you're looking at aesthetics and compatibility for future projects on 38. My fear is if we approve this project, given the issues that I've raised with you and that have been raised by others and will be raised by others after me, I think that, and because of the precedent for future projects by doing so, that you're gonna be faced with down the road, I think this is a big step toward not killing the golden goose, but maybe wounding the golden goose that really is represented by our beacher, beaches, our architecture, our sense of place, community, and our way of life. I don't think this is a property rights issue. These guys-
Can you try to wrap up? We've got about-
Yeah, I will.
Two hundred more people want to speak.
I will. I'm, I'm really done. I just, I just don't think this is a property rights issue. I think there's a possibility of building a very viable economic project on this site, just not this one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Jeff Floyd?
Thank you for hearing me down. We have to shut the door, 'cause we need to be able to hear.
I'm gonna make a statement just real quick. If, if those that are outside the room, you know, we do hear you and it, it makes it hard for us to hear up here. Um, if we can't keep the noise down, we will have to close the doors to keep the noise down. So please, please try not to get too rowdy where we can all get through this meeting and, and try to get business done. Nora Murphy will be next. Nora Murphy will be next, so if you can start making your way up towards the front. Mr. Floyd, have you been sworn?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Jeff Floyd.
Jeff Floyd and I have been sworn. Uh, and I'm a member of Seagrove Baptist Church, uh, next door to this proposed, uh, development. Three key points that I'd like to bring up. One is that when I read the, uh, development code, it was my understanding that 75 rooms was the maximum that was allowed in a village mixed use. I may be wrong, but that was my reading of it. This calls for 90 rooms. Secondly, I've lived here for 12 years. Moved down here, um, to get away from Atlanta and enjoy the, the beach and the laid-back nature, uh, of our community. And in the first two years, uh, because the house we bought was already on a rental program, we honored the rentals, the leases that were already signed up. We felt that was right. And after the second year, my wife said, "Can we please not do that anymore? It's tearing the house up." So we, we stopped that, but one of the things that we didn't stop is the rentals around us in which, while we had heard from our rental company that there were guidelines as to how many cars were allowed, and many of those stated there were two cars per property or three cars based on what the parking was, was available, uh, on the site, uh, that did not deter the renters from, uh, putting in five or six cars and blocking us in and prohibited us from, from being able to use our, our own property. Now, uh, I use Hampton Inn's a lot on my, my travels and it's a great, it's a great franchise, uh, but it's, it is a business hotel usually. And if, I would think that if the intent was business, they would be on 98, not on 38. So if it is, because it's on 38, then it must be going to attract intention or not renters. If we have many of the rooms that have up to six sleeping accommodations, from the, uh, the motto that I heard when we first got down here of beds and heads, uh, there're gonna be at least six people, uh, in those rooms during the high season. Uh, so if we don't have, if we only have 1.1 car per room required, that is for a traditional hotel, I would think, not a rental community. And therefore, if we have two to three cars per room to meet those six people, uh, that could be 200 or more cars actually trying to find spaces. If you have 102 spaces, where is the overflow? Well, I see Seagrove Baptist Church as a natural place since they're gonna move in here Friday nights when we're not there, and then where are we gonna park? Because one of the things then that gives, gives us two alternatives. One, we have to put on a black hat and have a towing company full-time to get the people off, which is, we don't, we want to be a good community participant and neighbor, but where are those people gonna go? Because my experience has been also with renters, is when they pay the ticket, pay the price to come down here, they think they own whatever they need to for those days that they're here. And so they take over the parking, they take over the beach access and everything else. Uh, I welcome them, but they take fast and, and loose with the rules. So I don't know what the county can do from an enforcement standpoint on parking, but that's, that's a real concern. The third thing is, Sunday morning is, of course, our peak traffic. And if we have a hotel on the east and a hotel on the west, which is the next property coming up for development, then we've got, I don't know how many cars trying to get out because that's gonna be the day that they vacate, the renters vacate to go back home. And so, so on Sunday mornings, we're gonna have, uh, a safety issue that I want you to know ahead of time. And I hope that nothing happens before there's a requirement for a policeman to be on duty or that we're gonna have to incur the cost of having a policeman to allow us to get out. Uh, so, uh, they're getting the benefit of room rentals and we're paying the cost of policemen. Uh, hopefully, and that's only the cost we have and not of human, uh, tragic accidents going on. So that's a concern I have of the peak demand, uh, coming out with a very tight, um, frontage. If this hotel is exiting on 38 as well as the Seagrove Baptist Church and then the retail and hotel on the west, we're also on a compound curve, as you know, on 38 in that location. And so visual distances trying to get out all at the same time are compromised. Uh, so I flagged the safety concern that we have, uh, as well as the density, uh, and the parking issues that, that are already proven to, uh, go beyond, uh, code.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Floyd. Ms. Murphy? Could we please state your name and have you been sworn?
Nora Murphy, and yes, I have been sworn.
Okay, before you get started, I want to make one more quick comment. Try to remind everybody, try to stick to stuff that directly impacts this project. I mean, I've got a story, everybody's got a story, but I don't think everybody wants to hear everybody's story tonight. Uh, let's try to stay on topic and move along as quick as we can. Go ahead.
Well, I am Nora Murphy. I have been sworn. I'm also a community association manager. I manage four condominiums down 38, all of them located approximately within a mile, mile and a quarter from this parcel. Now, out of all my owners, which is approximately 100, not one that I have talked to has even thought this came near to be incompatible with 38. And why, I understand the planning department and mixed use village, they point out all the commercial that this is around, the, the storage units, the little strip mall beside it, um, the church. None of those are open 24 hours a day. So I don't, I don't think it comes near to meeting what is that zoning. Not only is that, but the stormwater. Why, I understand the drainage and I know the expense that the developer's willing to go through for this, um, stormwater development, that the bottom line is, even though what you do is you take the surface water and you're containing it, it's still going underground. So instead of it being spread over the whole two and a half acres, it's now in a small area and when those dry wells, so to speak, when they get full, they are going to be absorbed down to the ground and travel to the water table. So I, that my third issue is the traffic. Um, again, several of my complexes I manage has units that sleep six. We have on all the rules and regulations, all the rental things, one car per, per unit. It's never that a way. We tow people all the time. We have to call rental agencies. So my point is, is that I think the community is right. There is not gonna be one car per unit. When it is sleeping six people, you need to at least have two. And whether or not that fits in with the code, it's just the way of 38. And also, one of my prime concerns is, we all address the people and the impact on the road, we've also got the bike paths. So now you're gonna have people crossing from the hotel to get on the bike path, even creating more dangerous of an area there on the road. Um, and lastly, what I would like to say is to the commissioners especially, that, you know, we represent, we, we understand that everybody's pointing out what you should and shouldn't do, but I, as a citizen, vote for you to help plan for the future, plan for the infrastructure. So I'm asking that you please vote no. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Can y'all tell me if there were houses, if this, if this hotel did not go? How, what is the maximum number of four-story houses that could be in that space? How many?
Zero.
No houses could go there?
No, no single-family detached in VMU.
Okay. Thank you.
Tim Parker. And Lloyd Paul will be next. So Lloyd, if you can make your way towards the front. If you would state your name and have you been-
I'm Tim Parker and I have been sworn.
Thank you, sir.
I'm with, trustee with Seagrove Baptist Church, um, Tim Parker. Seagrove Baptist Church, I'm a trustee. So I'm an officer of the church. We're very concerned about this property. We, uh, already been before you, uh, the board before, um, when it was gonna be condos because they were gonna have a restaurant and serve alcohol. Uh, I'd be willing to bet that the retail space for the Hampton Inn is probably gonna serve beer and wine. The whole, the, the pool will be close to, to 38. Uh, spring breakers, Sunday, it don't matter, they're gonna be out there drinking beer and wine and hanging out. You can have an 18-foot buffer, that don't help. And, and we have, uh, Wednesday night service, Sunday morning service, and you're gonna have all this noise, all the parking, everything that's gonna be attributed. I know Scott, he may not remember me. I was the chairman of the building committee when we built the church and, uh, it's just not compatible with the neighborhood, especially right next to a church when you're gonna have... They haven't mentioned spring breakers because they know everybody hates spring breakers, you know? So, I'm, also, I manage over 52nd homes for people. They're very concerned about this, that it's gonna, um, impact 38, the traffic already. So it's the, the homeowners and the owners of the rental properties are, are concerned. They're gonna, they say they have 101 parking spots. I can guarantee you, there'll be twice that many cars trying to get in because if you have a room with four, with, for four people during spring break, there's gonna be four cars show up. I mean, that's just the way they do. They'll have adults renting rooms for the, for the college kids and everything. That happens on the other rental properties. We tried for it not to happen, but that's, it's just the traffic. 38 is already torn up. It's got, it's, some areas, it's like driving on a washboard because it's so rough, especially in that area. So we're, we're concerned with security of the church, um, uh, and the traffic and just what's gonna be going on right next door to us. It's just not something that would be compatible with that area. And so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Lloyd Paul and then Richard Hickson will be next.
Mr. Chairman, in the interest of time, I will decline to add additional comments since my Seagrove neighbors have already expressed all of my concerns about the negative impacts quite well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Richard Hickson?
Good evening, thank you. Uh, my name's Richard Hickson. I've been sworn in. I've, uh, been a homeowner here for about 17 years. I live on, uh, Eastern Lake Road. Uh, two things have, big questions have been asked that I really haven't heard an answer or don't understand an answer. Uh, one of my favorite things is to go to the grocery store down at Publix and, uh, almost every day. And I come back and, uh, what I really do is, sometimes I cut through on Isaiah because there's so much traffic down there, but if I come around, I enjoy counting cars and seeing how far they're backed up. And the record is 120 all the way to Ballot Studio. Uh, and I've been amazed, it doesn't- And I've been amazed, it doesn't go away during the wintertime now. And so I really didn't understand the definition, 500 people, 57 car trips a day, unless they're gonna bring meals on wheels in there. It's just not gonna happen. So I'd like to hear some discussion of that. The other is, if there's any definition of overburdening, the beach access that is in the residential area that was mentioned early, is definitely overburdened. I walk the beach most days that direction down to the park. I don't believe there's gonna be any parking down at the lake where the access is very long down to where the breakthrough comes in. So I, I'd like to give the developer a chance to talk about where they're gonna direct 500 people seven months out of the year, or whatever it is. And thank you, just those two questions.
Thank you. Richard Fuquet? Am I even close? You got it, Suzanne. Arthur Cohn, I think, will be next, so...
F-O-U-Q-U-E-T.
Have you been sworn?
I have.
Okay.
And just for the record, I am opposed to the project. But I just wanted to reiterate, reiterate a letter that I sent to the county commissioners earlier this week. It seems as if the project approval process is a bit unpredictable, and seems to disappoint the majority of our local citizens nearly every time a new development comes up for review. There may be a better and more predictable way to direct our forthcoming growth, one that certainly merits consideration. The system is called Smart Growth and Transact Planning. I would urge the county to adopt it for all its communities throughout the area, but especially along the 30A corridor. It's a system that creates walkable and interesting places to live, work, and enjoy. It assists in directing of appropriate building types and scales that are contextually appropriate, and assigns suitable design criteria for that context. It contributes to the overall street design, enhances our public spaces. I think if we had this system in place, future development would be more predictable, would encounter less resistance from our local community, while creating places we would admire and value. Thank you.
Mr. Fuquet, can I ask you a question real quick?
Yes, sir.
You said you sent that letter to the county commissioners?
I did.
I would, I would encourage you to go visit with your county commissioner and discuss that, because they're the ones that really need to address that issue. I wish we could, but we're not empowered to do that.
Well, I understand, and I, and I know this is a little bit
Right.
off-topic, but it's incredibly related.
Well, I, I, I agree it's related, I think it's something that should be talked about, 'cause I think there's a lot of issues that are being talked about tonight that are very legitimate issues that, that need to be addressed.
Yes, sir.
But this isn't necessarily the place that we can do that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Arthur Cohn, and then Charles Rigdon, and then we're gonna take a break.
Thank you, I'm Arthur Cohn, and I have been sworn. It's K-A-H-N. I've been asked by the president of the Seaside Town Council to say that I represent the Seaside Town Council, so I'm here speaking for 400, more or less, homeowners at Seaside. I'm gonna, I'll be very brief, but even before starting, I'm gonna depart from what I was gonna say because of a couple things I heard here. First of all, I truly am stunned at the magnitude of this development. The, if you do the math, they're going to shoehorn, I would use that phrase, 400 or 500 people in the peak season into, into this Hampton Room with this small footprint. And if you do the math with 100 parking places, and you've got 400 or 500 people there at peak season, and, I think someone mentioned this, maybe, I mean, to service that size of a population, you've got to have 20 or more staff on hand to do that. I don't understand how the 100 parking spaces is even close to being adequate or would pass muster with any county commission. The second thing I heard, and this reminded me of when I used to practice law about 100 years ago, you know, you know this, when the facts are on your side, if you're a lawyer, you argue the facts, when, when the law is on your side, you argue the law, you don't do the opposite. So what I'm hearing the esteemed counsel for the developer say, is what I've heard before. He says to you, "Well, you might have 100 people here in favor of the project, and you might have 100 people here against the project." But, subtext is, you don't really have any discretion, commissioners, you don't have any discretion, you just plug it in and follow the law. Because if you've got 100 on one side and 100 citizens on the other side, it's not up to them, follow the law. Well, it leaves out a couple of things. I don't have to tell you that a lot of what you undertake to do involves sound discretion, as, as the implementation and the execution of all laws does. Tell me it's that easy, your job, that you sit there and just hear a bunch of people talk, you get the facts, and you plug it in, and there's your correct answer. There's a solid discretionary aspect to what you do, and this project begs you to exercise sound discretion on Scenic Highway 30A. And second, the idea that there might be 100 people for and 100 people against is very amusing, don't you think? I mean, you've got 9,000 names on a petition and probably another 20,000 owners along 30A, who, as you know, and you know this in your gut, and you know this because of facts you've heard...
Mr. Cohn, if you would, just, let, let's try to stick to what we're talking about, okay? You're not, you're not here as an attorney. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I meant to not repeat what other people said.
I understand, I understand.
I'll do the best I can, okay? If I can, may I finish that last thought with, which is simply to say that the wishes of your constituents along 30A are not for nothing. And I think you need to have a very solid reason to go over their objection in order to do something. If I've used up my time, I'll sit down now.
There's no time limit, but we just try to...
I will be, okay. Here's what I wanted to say, these are my prepared remarks. 30 or so years ago, Seaside was worth virtually nothing. Robert Davis, the developer, could hardly give away parcels there. I don't know if you know this, you probably know it better than I do, the residential and commercial value of Seaside now approximates $1 billion. This is an enormous investment. Rosemary is bigger and more valuable than Seaside. Watercolor is or will be. Alice Beach, when it's finished, will be worth more than Seaside. Same thing with Watersound, maybe double Seaside. It's probably going to max out somewhere soon north of $10 billion. And the reason that these communities along 30A get higher rents and higher property values, and consequently pay higher taxes, is for what 30A doesn't have. And what it doesn't have are those things that are commodities. Our position is, I wanna make this crystal clear, we're not against the brand, we're not a bunch of elitist people who don't think we should have a Hampton in our neighborhood, but who would be happier with a Four Seasons or a Ritz. Yeah, a little happier, but we would still be here, okay? This is about the fear of commoditization, and that's really what this is about. And so when you exercise your sound discretion, and I'll, I'll close with this, I really think you have to, to decide honestly, does this project fit with what we want 30A to be and what it should be? And last, I will say, and I'm averting now to what your planner said, there are certain mi, certain of the minimum requirements that certainly have been met, but I would urge you, and Seaside would urge you, and I'm gonna presume to say that everybody just about here in the room would urge you to say, that we're not going to set the standard where if this storage facility is offending, but it's already there, or this high-rise was there before the 50-foot requirement, and there are a couple of offending uses along 30A, and this is no more offensive than them, that's not the standard, folks. It's, I, I don't think it should be the standard along Scenic Highway 30A. Thank you very much.
Mr. Rigdon?
I just signed in when I came, but...
Mr. Rigdon, you didn't have anything to say?
No.
You're my best friend.
That's the...
Can I clap, can I clap?
Yeah.
Let's go, we're gonna take a 10-minute break, and we'll be back in here. It is about 17 after, so we'll say at 6:30. This la, did you leave his name?
Oh, I want to, I want y'all to all eat, and whoever doesn't, whoever, it's the last person takes it, rest of them.
Oh, 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 oh.
Take some, take some.
Have all you want, take some home.
No, no, it's the, you did, you need some guidance. Thank you, you did good, thank you.
Are we doing good? I'm, I'm very difficult out, especially these times.
Oh, please eat all you want. It's chocolate and peppermint and white choc, dark choc. Taste, have all you want. I told them, everybody's gonna take it home, 'cause it can't go home with me.
They're all coming in to get some chocolate, pepperoni.
I was gonna say cross out and get to, uh, Hal and Julie Kelly.
And Julie?
And Julie Kelly, I got the lead, so, and I don't think he had it. Not speaking, most speaking.
Okay. I'll make sure they... Yes, sir.
Yeah, my sister-in-law has done a 404 up in Georgia for 40 years, and I, I, I talked to her all the time, I said, "What's going on with her?" She's almost my age, she's a little bit, no, down 80, she's 65, she's 62. She's gonna get that up, she's 60, I'm 50. I said, "You're a brother for 20 years." She does, she says she likes it, she's been doing it for 40 years. Well, she's civil service, she, she works at the office in Air Force Station, and he, he says she loves it, and I guess if you drive the house, her husband likes it, 'cause he's, he's retired, so she's not around, you know, so he loves it.
That's thank you. But that is what I'm here for. Still, to just listen to everybody on both sides, and whatever happens, happens. At least I showed up. Where's Parker?
I don't know. He had breakfast the other morning.
I don't care.
And he said he's... He said he was gonna be here with bells on, but I don't know. Now, he was riding his motorcycle, not one. He got hit with a car or something. I don't know, so... I don't know. He said he was gonna be here. In his... In his words, she wouldn't miss it for anything.
Yeah, bullshit. And that probably would have been what I wanted, too. My son was texting me, and he said, "Pat," and he said, "All right, this is perfect." And he said, "Oh, that is such a point." You can sit up and go outside and take a nap, and he said, "He's probably more..." Hit him on the air. It is getting warm on the outside. Just get...
And it's dangerous to walk through it.
Yeah, well, there is nothing unless he walks on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, hit a pole unless he's walking.
Yeah.
I feel like I'm... I feel like I'm sitting on the floor.
You know, but I hate that this chair is standing next to that.
I don't know.
I'm the same way. I feel like I'm sleeping. I feel like I'm asleep. You're telling me you're asleep?
But if this chair can make that...
Here it is again.
This is about stuff like that, Karen.
We did Charles Wiggan, right? We did Charles Wiggan. We can go ahead and call the meeting back to order. It is six-thirty. The next person who signed up is Felicia Ferguson. Is Felicia here? Okay, Janice Ferguson. Walter Moss. And after Walter will be John Prouse, I think it is.
Uh, Walter Moss, M-O-S-S.
Walter, have you been sworn?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh... I look at this crowd back here, and I wonder what it'd be like if everybody's in bikinis and bathing suits on Seagrove Beach.
We wouldn't set a nine o'clock time certain. How's that?
But, uh, looking at this, uh, development, I... Prior to going to law school, I worked, uh, doing feasibility stu... studies and due diligence, uh, for a large commercial retail developer. And, uh, we met specifically, uh, with planning commissions and, uh, from a legal perspective, I mean, I completely, uh, view this as a... as a commercial development. Uh, there's nothing in here that substantially, you know, says that it's a village mixed use. But I want to touch on a couple of points. I... I chair the Walton County, uh, Chamber Government Affairs Committee, and I sit in on a lot of meetings and I look at a lot of studies. One of the studies that I have with me is a study I performed on the parking analysis. Uh, specifically, it addresses, uh, the public parking being limited in many areas, the safety concerns that you, uh, obviously had this study performed for, uh, as well as emergency vehicle a... access and pedestrian bicycle safety. We can enter in this there, if you need it. Y'all have the study.
Just to keep, uh... Just to keep a clean record, we'll mark this objectors number one.
Okay. Of the forty-five spaces that are proposed...
Do you have a copy for everybody up here?
Uh, no, just...
We'll make a copy.
But y'all have it on the website, on your website. We've got, of the forty-five spaces, uh, only nineteen of those are actually new spaces that are proposed within the next five years within Seagrove. And that means most of these spaces that are proposed are actually, what they're called, formalized parking, meaning that they're... I already use them, you know, to park when I go fishing or whatever. Uh, it's just literally, you know, putting lines in the... in the pavement. And so, with nineteen additional parking and we're looking at this... this parking already, and yes, the great question about, you know, what type of rooms and the capacity of the hotel. You know, I know that y'all have a fear, basically, not just of this, what this development can do, but of being sued, basically, in litigation, the county does. You know, are we in danger of violating the law? And I think you are already, from what I'm hearing from the church, in that you're knowingly allowing a private nuisance to that church. Because there's not adequate parking. You know, I don't care what the code says. You know what this building and what this hotel is allowing. And it's allowing six, four to six people, and I've never seen six people fit in their car and drive to the beach with their luggage and their cooler. And I've never seen any spring breaker go to the beach without a cooler. And he... And they're not doing it on their bikes. And, you know, we've mentioned this being in a curve. It's, you know, if it got more of a curve, it wouldn't be a U-turn, but it's a dangerous curve. And thirty-eight is dangerous. You know, it's... We have limited lighting there for good reasons, but for driving and safety concerns, uh, it's very much a hazard. Not to mention all these people that are staying, you know, might be staying for one to three nights, and they're not familiar with the area. And they're in this curve, and I just... I feel like it just creates a... an extreme, uh, safety position... uh, safety problem. And, uh, as far as, uh... as far as the zoning goes, you know, I mean, you can look at some of this retail, the six hundred and sixty-foot retail. I mean, you could... You can look at Tom Thumb and, you know, say they sell beer and cigarettes, but it's still a gas station, you know? And this is a hotel. That's what it is, and it's all it's intended to be. And, you know, in law, they teach you, you know, substance over form, you know? You work in an office and obviously, you know, you're not allowed to accept payments or anything to make your vote. Somebody tried to circumvent that by taking you on a vacation while you didn't get paid, what really happened? You understand? And I'm not, certainly not accusing anybody of anything at all. But what I'm trying to say is substance over form, you know, what's really going on. And I think you're immediately in danger, uh, of violating, uh, this First Baptist Church's rights, but, you know, the parking has to go somewhere. The evidence shows that, you know, we don't have room at the beaches. There's no public parking available. So what happens? I mean, answer me that question.
I can't answer that for you, so...
Okay.
John, how you say your last name?
Prouse.
Prouse?
Prouse. P-R-U-S-C-H. I live in Watersound Beach.
And have you been sworn?
I have.
Thank you.
I'm the president of the Homeowners Association of Watersound Beach. Watersound Beach is located equidistant from the intersection of Route 395 to Our Place and then Camp Creek Parkway. Camp Creek Parkway and 395 are the two exits that people who stay in this hotel can get out of town by taking. They could also go down to Rosemary Beach and drive through, uh, Panhandle City. That's even further away. On busy days this past summer, jammed up at the intersection, I think this proposal for the Planning Commission is backwards from what it should be. That is, the Planning Commission ought to be considering today the intersection of 395 and thirty-eight and improving the flow of traffic, so it doesn't back up the way one of the gentlemen spoke an hour or so ago, was talking about a hundred and twenty-eight cars. I must have been in the same place at the same time. Couldn't believe it. The second thing that you ought to be considering is fixing the storm sewers along thirty-eight that flood every time we get a good rainstorm from the Gulf, which is pretty often. My only experience with that, or my worst experience with that, was driving home one night at about four o'clock from being over in Destin, and it had rained very heavily. The bike paths were flooded in the immediate area where this hotel was gonna be, on the other side, just down the street. There were two little girls aged twelve on bicycles that couldn't make it through the flooded bike paths, so guess where they were? Out in the traffic of thirty-eight on a summer rainy night at four o'clock in the afternoon. That's the danger that we have by not prioritizing what we should be doing, which is improving the traffic, and let these types of businesses and the restaurants move to ninety-eight. But you're gonna exacerbate the problem if you allow the hotel first before you ever get around to those things. You'll have more little kids out on thirty-eight. That's all I want to say. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Kelly Mossberg and Mark Schell will be next.
Mossberg, M-O-S-S-B-U-R-G. I've been sworn in.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, uh, men and women of the Planning Commission, my name is Kelly Mossberg, and I represent a group of concerned property owners who live on thirty-eight, and we have been behind the recent petition to oppose the development of this Hampton Inn. In just a few short weeks, we've been able to gather more than ninety-two hundred signatures on that petition. In addition, we've been able to raise over sixteen thousand five hundred dollars in financial support to back our efforts to stop this development. Clearly, this issue has struck a nerve of Walton County residents, property owners, business owners, and others across the region who vacation here and want the county to uphold its own develop... development laws. We've had literally thousands of posts on our social media sites with people expressing their strong concerns and displeasure over what is happening here. The points which will be made by one of our attorneys here in just a few minutes, I hope, if she's called forward, and I will not belabor, include previous errors that have been made in the subdividing of the parcel in question, environmental restrictions on setting aside sufficient acreage for preservation, improper application of the spirit and intent of the mixed-use classification as it relates to the retail space in this development, the drainage issues, which have already been talked about quite a bit, created by this massive project causing stormwater runoff into the coastal lake basin around Eastern Lake, and the overtaxing of the current roadways to handle the increased traffic flow onto thirty-eight. Each one of these issues has merit on its own, but taken together, along with the unprecedented outpouring of opposition to this project, should compel this body to reject this proposed development before it even gets to the County Commission for a vote. We respectfully request your support in denying this request to move this project forward based on the fact that in doing so, you'll be violating your own laws meant to preserve what is meant... made this community what it is today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Schnell and Mary Nielsen will be next.
She went home.
She went home?
She left her jacket. I had to get it. I had to send it back.
Yes, my name is Mark Schnell. It's S-C-H-N-E-L-L. I have been sworn in. So I'm a Seagrove resident and also a professional urban designer and planner. I've been designing mixed-use communities nationally and internationally for about nearly twenty years now. Let's talk about village mixed use. It includes a stipulation that, quote, "The scale and uses at the edge shall be compatible with abutting neighborhood uses." It's very narrowly written, considering the impact that this will have on the entire neighborhood, if not all of thirty-eight, but there still is incompatibility within abutting use. A Hampton Inn is completely incompatible with the Seagrove Baptist Church. A ninety-room national chain hotel like a Hampton Inn will attract spring breakers from around the country. They'll pack six or more people into the... into these rooms. High school, college students should easily strain the small parking lot for this hotel, forcing people to park in adjacent properties such as the church. The church will also suffer from the misbehavior of those same spring breakers and other similar hotel patrons. Church members will be greeted on Sunday mornings by drunk high school and college students who use the church crowns as their toilet and/or unintentional bed for the night. A hotel in a beach community like Seagrove is not the same as a hotel in a different type of community. It simply has different demands on it and attracts different kinds of people who use the community in a different kind of way. They will not be a good neighbor to the church or really any of the rest of Seagrove. And this really needs to be taken into consideration in this situation. Scale of building is incompatible with the neighborhood in general. Four stories and approximately two hundred and sixty feet in length. It'll be one of the bulkiest and longest buildings in all of Seagrove, outside of one Seagrove place, which of course caused the height limit to come into place in the first place. It appears to be even longer than one Seagrove place. This kind of scale is inappropriate in this context. It'll be extremely visible from westbound thirty-eight and visually, uh, you know, clutter our scenic highway in a way that I think none of us want. But scale is more than building mass. It's also about the number of people. As has been mentioned, this is an enormous number of people, hundreds during the busy times, for an area that simply does not have the infrastructure to handle it. And by the way, uh, speaking of streets, the streets across, uh, from this site are actually private streets, so crossing those will put quite a burden on those folks who are maintaining them. The proposed Hampton Inn is also incompatible with another abutting property, that would be Highway thirty-eight. And I realize this is county property, but it will be severely and negatively impacted by this hotel. Site is farther from a connecting road, a full two... a connecting road up to ninety-eight, a full two miles than any other proposed or existing hotel site. It's a long ways to get people out to the main road, and that's a bad spot for something this big with that many people. So it's really going to strain what's already a strained intersection at thirty-eight and three ninety-five by the many, many cars that will be unleashed in the high season. So let's talk about, finally, the intent of the village mixed use. You've heard a little bit about this, but I want to read, uh, from the, uh, the comp plan. "This category is designed to allow a mix of uses, including limited lodging, which will assist in creating sustainable villages with commercial uses within walking or biking distance for residents. The commercial uses shall be in scale and character with the village concept." There's nothing about this that's a village concept at all. The... "This is simply a standard prototype hotel with a mysterious six hundred and sixty square feet of retail thrown in for fun." The addition of the retail appears to be just there to justify the village mixed-use designation. But I can tell you, as a professional urban designer, there is nothing village about this. It's simply a standard prototype hotel dropped in, and that... the retail is really not an issue here. Parking lot's placed to the side in the front of the building, which is inappropriate by any village standards, uh, and certainly the intent of what village mixed use was always intended to be. "Spend my career designing plans you can accurately call village mixed-use. This isn't even close." You can't just drop in a hotel and a little bit of retail and say it comes to that standard. Several people have pointed out even more reasons why this proposal should be rejected. I agree with all of them, but one stands out more than anything to me, and that word is incompatibility. And that's the one word you can use to reject this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nielsen's not here, is that correct? Joe... Namie? And then Louis LaSueur will be next.
My name is Joe Namie, and I have been sworn in.
Thank you.
N-A-M-I-E. Thank you. Mr. Commissioner, it's an honor to be able to speak with all these other people here, and I'll respect your wishes and I'll repeat the hundreds of things that have already been said in opposition to this Hampton Inn or any hotel-type structure. I would like to quote two things. I'm a... I was in the Navy thirty-eight years, retired two thousand and eleven, and I spent most of my life, uh, defending our Constitution and embodied in that Constitution is the Declaration of Independence, which guarantees life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And I would say, in quoting Henry Thoreau, that, uh, "Any man more right than his neighbor, constitutional majority of one." And I've got a lot of neighbors here, a lot of them have signed petitions, that don't feel like this is the right thing to do. Two other things I'll mention that nobody's mentioned yet. Thunder Beach. I'm not against motorcycles, but can you imagine... I'm not against motorcycles, but can you imagine Thunder Beach here in the middle of the summer with all those guys there, running up and down thirty A with their motorcycles ganged up here? The ambiance of thirty A, and it's been called the Golden Goose, you can call it anything, we've been coming down here for thirty years, and it's a great concept. So many people have said it more eloquently than I have as to how precious it is and how much it could be improved with some of the planning. One other issue that Mr. Davis is probably familiar with, there's an Eastern Lake outfall issue over there, and it's just going to exacerbate that issue even more. And I'm on Eastern Lake Road, and it's, we've seen flooding here and there. So there's a lot of legal arguments, there's a lot of emotional arguments, but it's going to come down to your responsibility as officers of this county to do the right thing. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Louis LaSueur? Lois, I'm sorry.
I assume you still remember how to spell my name.
Lois, have you been sworn?
I have, but I'm here as an attorney representing the petitioners, the nine thousand two hundred people who have signed the petition, so I don't know that I'm really here testifying, per se. I want to start by talking about what the county calls an illegal lot split. An illegal lot split is where someone goes in and subdivides or resubdivides property and records those documents with the clerk of court, but does not get planning permission for that subdivision. And the only enforcement mechanism that the planning department has, and the one they have always used, is we won't let you build anything on the resulting illegal lot. Yes, you can, you can get that lot, you can record that lot, you can legally sell that lot, although it is actually under your land development code and misdemeanor to do so, but you cannot pull a building permit or a development order on that lot. This was the original lots that this project is now being proposed on. As you can see, they ran north and south. They both abutted County Road thirty A. They were both approximately two and a quarter acres. The Seagrove Climate Controlled Storage Facility came in and proposed a development where they were going to develop on the northern side of the lot away from thirty A and wanted to resubdivide the property, which they proposed to do through a lot split or a minor replat, same process. But the lot split that they applied for was denied because they did not, the way they were restructuring the lot, it did not, the resulting lot, the northern lot, did not abut a public or private road, which is a requirement for a minor lot split. Ultimately, the project was approved and a development order was issued. The entire parcel during that time period, they submitted several environmental reports. The entire parcel, as you can see through the hatching, was sand pine scrub. Sand pine scrub requires fifty percent preservation, so out of the four and a half approximate acres, they were going to have to protect at least two and a quarter acres, give or there was some confusion in the planning department, and there were various mistakes made. Ultimately, the project was approved on about two acre, just a little under two acre northern lot and a slightly larger southern lot, and the development order said that it was, because it was under two acres and it was not on thirty A, preservation was not required. That was not true because they had not resubdivided the lot, and they still had, and they still have today, two, two and a quarter acre lots that both abut County Road thirty A. Now, if you're going to tell a single-family homeowner who finds out that their lot that they purchased, that they want to build a home on, that they can't build a building, they cannot pull a building permit for their single-family home because they have an illegal lot, I don't know how you can issue a development order to a developer to build a huge hotel on a parcel that has never been legally created. Now, they can come in, they can ask to plat it, they will have to get the Climate Controlled Storage Facility people to join them in that effort, but they're going to have to produce a development, a projected development, a proposed development, that meets all the provisions of the code. You can't get out of your preservation requirement by splitting a lot off so that it doesn't abut thirty A. They're going to have to provide preservation for the entire parcel, and just because they didn't provide it on the northern half of the property doesn't mean they don't have to provide it on the southern half of the property. Now, they're planning to provide preservation for the area that they are impacting, but they have to provide preservation for the entire parcel. There's also the question of buyout. Everybody just assumes that buyout is automatic, right? You can buy out half of your preservation. That is if the county agrees to allow it. The county has the discretion to say, this is on a scenic corridor, it's in a coastal Dune Lake drainage basin, it already has flooding problems. We don't think that buying out the additional preservation is a good idea, and it is up to the county, it is up to you guys and to the County Commission, to determine whether that buyout should be allowed on this piece of property. And my suggestion to you, given the code provisions that encourage additional preservation in the scenic corridor and that encourage additional preservation in coastal Dune Lake drainage basins, that that additional buyout should not be permitted in this case. It is completely discretionary, and if you don't feel like it would be a good idea, you can require them to do the full amount of preservation, and I suggest that you do so. I could go into the village mixed-use argument. I will say that it was the county's interpretation for many years that a mix of uses requires residential and commercial, not just two different kinds of commercial. If you think about it, a mall is a mixed-use development if two different kinds of commercial constitutes a mixed use. The idea behind village mixed-use and all the other mixed-use development categories in Walton County was to encourage places like Seaside, Rosemary Beach, Alice Beach, where you have residential units mixed in with commercial units in walkable, bikable communities, not a hotel that has six hundred and sixty feet adjacent to the pool that may or may not sell anything more than a few snacks.
Thank you.
My name's Mary Konovsky, K-O-N-O-V-S-K-Y, and I have been sworn in. I'm just up here now to say I agree with the arguments that have been made against the development, and the only thing I would have to add is a sad story, and since Mr. Stewart has disallowed those sad stories, I'm going to concede any time I might have had to someone else who has additional information to provide.
Thank you very much. And it's not that I don't want to hear your sad story, just not tonight. Lynda Cox.
Everything I wanted to say has been covered.
Thank you very much. Helen Julie Kelly.
Everything we wanted to say has been covered.
Thank you. Bonnie Vines.
Everything has been covered.
Lenore King.
Likewise.
All right, I like that row. Joseph Mustachio.
I think he left.
Is he gone?
Yeah, I don't see him in the room.
Okay. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak in the public portion of this hearing? Yes, sir.
My name is Thomas Gallion, and I have not been sworn in. G-A-L-L-I-O-N.
Mr. Gallion raises his right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this board will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
My family has been homeowners in thirty A since nineteen fifty-one. My grandfather was two-term Attorney General of the State of Alabama when he helped to fight a lot of this stuff fifty, sixty years ago. I had a piece of property under contract, three lots, four lots down from this. Zone VMU, same thing, a little smaller piece of property. Came through the Planning Commission a hundred times over there dealing with these guys, every excuse in the world as to why I could not build my construction office. Mainly had to do with scenic corridor stuff, signage, couldn't have certain-sized signage. They shot me down every way they could. If they allow this property to go through, I will sue the county, personally, me, because I have been screwed. My father's one of the best litigation attorneys in the country. He's had a home here forever, so I'm not afraid of county legal bills or whatever. We'll run hours up and paperwork till people get sick and dizzy, but it's, this is a joke. Everybody here knows it, everybody in this building knows it. I will sue Walton County if this project is let go through.
Thank you.
That's all I have to say.
My name is Alfred Testa. I have not been sworn in. Alfred Testa, T-E-S-T-A.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this board will be the truth?
I do. I live on Brown Street. I heard it mentioned before by someone, one of the board members. We get all the flooding. We've been flooded out so many times, I can't even start to tell you how many times we've been flooded out from water running off of thirty A. There are two things you've got to consider. This cannot be considered in and of itself all alone, because you have another development order taking place only a couple of hundred feet away from another seventy-five-foot, another seventy-five-room hotel. Taken together, they will put undue burden on thirty A. And I don't believe the traffic study, I don't know who did it, Mickey Mouse. The other, it's a seventy-five-room hotel, and they have figured they have a hundred and forty-seven cars per peak hour. This is a ninety-room hotel, be a lot more than fifty-nine peak cars per hour. Second, the drainage on thirty, there is no drainage on thirty A. We get all the water from all of that properties, and I don't care what they say about the drainage system. I've been involved for many years in building airports, and believe me, I know drainage. You can put all the drainage you want into systems underneath the parking lot. It depends on the percolation rate and how the water takes, how long it goes down. It's all going to go into the water table, and it's all going to seek where the water, it's all going to come down south. We've already had houses flooded out so many times on Brown Street. One woman's already spent several hundred thousand dollars lifting her house up off the ground. It hasn't hit me, but it has hit my next-door neighbor. I've spent time with him trying to bail out the backyard, back room. Can't do it. Now, as to building houses, someone asked about, if you rezone, someone of you asked about what would the, how many houses could you build on this property, two point four acres? If you rezoned it to residential, that's what you have to say, how many houses can be built on. Four, five hundred people letting out on thirty A, believe me. I drive it every day, been living there for twelve years. It's not nice. It's hard in the summertime driving on thirty A, and after it rains, all of the developments, the hidden dunes, the apartment complex, condo complex, they have drainage underneath the parking lot also, and you try to drive on thirty A when all that water's coming out of there because it's pumped out on thirty A. Where is all the development money going? I'm sure they're going to pay an impact fee. This seventy-five-room hotel was paying four hundred thousand dollars in impact fee. I don't see any drainage being put in on thirty A. Myself, my neighbors are worried about the water and the traffic. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Scott Jell. I have not been sworn in. It's J-E-H-L.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say that I second all of the arguments that I've heard tonight. My wife and I moved to the area two years ago. We're sort of young as far as who's been represented tonight, speaking up front here. I'm thirty-two years old, I'm a homeowner, I live on South Lake Drive, which is in this neighborhood that we're talking about. I spoke before this council several months ago, dealing with another issue where a lot next to my house was filled in, a wetland was filled in, and now I'm dealing with a lot of water on my property line. This is a very wet area. So that's one concern. I think the flood concerns are valid, but my primary concern is that we moved to this area for a very specific reason, and that's its lack of commodity. You know, all the treasured sort of environment that everyone's talked about tonight, that's why we moved here. We could have moved a lot of places. We're location independent as far as how we work, but we chose here for that reason, and I'm worried that the future of that is at risk. Thank you.
How are you doing?
Hello, my name is Gabe Blake. I have not been sworn in. I'm very short, yes. Is that better? Okay. I have not been sworn in.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do, yes.
Your last name is B-L-A-K-E?
B-L-A-K-E. I'm a longtime resident here. I live on Williams Street. My concern has already been mentioned, but I must ask again. Most of the reasons that people come here are to go to the beach. If we're going to have a motel or a hotel right there, those people are going to want to go to the beach. Are they going to have to access Williams Street to get to the beach? If so, they're going to deal with me, because I'm already known as the crazy grandmother that shoots the hose at people that speed up and down my street, because the speed limit is ten miles per hour. Nobody goes ten miles per hour. So they will be dealing with me, but the other thing is there's no place to park. At Eastern Lake, we lived there, we can't even ride our bikes down there and find a place to park. So my question would be, do they have a plan? Are they going to have like a little electric car that takes people to the beach? Are they going to drive their cars, ride their bikes, or are we going to have to use that as a private road and block it off? And I know that's selfish. There were a lot of other things said tonight that were much more important, but since I live there and have lived there for a long time, that is a major concern for me, is traffic on Williams Street. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brian Schwartz. I have not been sworn.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I represent my community up north, Mason, Ohio. We've been coming here for over twenty years but to Destin. Fortunately, two years ago, we got the privilege to stay on thirty A, fell in love with it, and were fortunate enough to buy a home here last year. I have one comment. Your sign above you, your placard, Walton County, Florida, says pride, preservation, and conservation. I believe everyone is here like me, that I have taken great pride in this community and for what it represents. I ask that you preserve what this area is all about. It's a beautiful community of households. It has an ambiance unlike any other place in the world, like the sand, and I would ask that you conserve it, and that is all I have to say. Thank you.
I've been sworn. My name is Phil Youngberg. Phil Youngberg, and that's Young, B-E-R-G. And I'm the, excuse me, president of Eastern Shores Homeowners Association. We're a twenty-four-unit complex on Eastern Lake Road. Our membership of twenty-four owners opposes this project for all the nine thousand reasons that have been cited on that petition, and I just want to go on record as saying that we think it's a bad idea. We think it shouldn't go any farther than this, and several of our owners live here and vote here, and we're going to watch this very carefully, and we appreciate your consideration. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is that all? Anybody else wish to be heard in the public portion of this hearing? Okay, we will close the public portion of the hearing?
No, we have, we have the code allows for a rebuttal.
All right.
Commissioners, we actually got to this point sooner than I anticipated. I have-
You still have a notepad left?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I'm going to touch base on a lot of issues that were raised, but before I do, I'm probably going to be the least popular person here tonight, when I state, your decision is not based upon a petition, your decision is not based upon desires, your decision is based upon whether this application meets the black and white rules that the county has adopted in the Comprehensive Plan and the Land Development Code. And whether folks would like those rules to be different, whether it's smart growth in the future, if we amend the plan or amend the code, that's not what we're here about tonight. You have an application pending before you. And one of the things, I have the pleasure of doing all three sides. I've represented neighbors challenging projects, I've represented developers such as this one, and I've represented local governments. And one of the common things I hear is when somebody comes in and wants to do, and I apologize for my Massachusetts accent, when they want to put ten pounds of sugar in a five-pound bag. I mean, you hear that all the time across the state. And I wanted to start with, we're not doing that tonight. Our client is not asking for a plan amendment, our client is not asking for a rezoning, our client is not asking for a variance, our client is not asking for a single relief from a single provision of your Comprehensive Plan or your Land Development Code. In fact, the staff report states that the impervious surface ratio maximums a point eight-five. We're at a point five-six. The maximum floor area ratio is point, is two-point-oh, two-hundred. We're at point five-seven, twenty-five percent of the maximum floor area ratio. That's allowed. And I understand some of the frustration that folks might not want to see what's proposed, but this property is VMU, Village Mixed Use. It's one of your most intensive land use designations that the county has in its Comprehensive Plan. And a property owner is entitled to rely upon the rules that have been adopted by the County Commission. And I want to take a few things out of order. Let me start first with the mix. And if I could turn you, that's one of the reasons that I did hand out the binder, if I could turn you to tab thirteen. There is a criticism that this is basically all commercial. It's a hotel, and it's retail, it's commercial. Well, VMU is described as a commercial land use. Your Land Development Code specifically calls out the primary uses that are allowed in Village Mixed Use. And that's found on, if you go to tab thirteen, page twenty-three, I've highlighted it in yellow, under B1, Primary Uses Allowed. The following uses are allowed, uses within this commercial land use district, General Commercial Uses, and then it specifically distinguishes General Commercial Units from VMU Limited Lodging. So, the plain language of your code authorizes a lodging unit being treated differently than a commercial use. And you'll also notice throughout both tab twelve and tab thirteen, there is no written requirement that residential needs to be a component of a VMU project. In fact, there was a Board of Adjustment decision recently that said, no, residential is not a mandatory component of a VMU project. So, we meet the mix that's allowed. Now, you've heard that it's a de minimis mix. What you haven't heard was a citation to the comp plan or a citation to the Land Development Code that says, thou shall have a mix in the following percentages. It simply says, there shall be a mix. If there was a criterion that stated, each use shall be no minimum than, a minimum of twenty-five percent of the floor area ratio, or there shall be a mixture with residential with no fewer than X number of units. And I've seen that in mixed-use projects. I have written mixed-use codes that have language like that. It's not in here. It simply states that you need to have a mixture of uses, and the code specifically states that a general commercial use, which is the retail, is a different use from a VMU Limited Lodging, which is the hotel. And I should also note, the code was recently changed to say that you could have a hundred and twenty-five rooms. This is ninety rooms, so it's thirty-five less than what the maximum is allowed by code. So, there's nowhere across anything that's being asked for that we're hitting the maximum. Traffic, yes, 38 is busy. Used to be the City of Destin Land Use Attorney in ninety-eight was busy. And many routes in Panama City, Front Beach Road in Panama City Beach is busy. Your code in your Comprehensive Plan has specifically created a process called proportionate fair share. And I included the provisions that are in your comp plan and in your Land Development Code that authorize a property owner to utilize proportionate fair share. And to the best of my knowledge, and I've been practicing in Walton County for twenty years, I have never heard of the County Commission telling a property owner that they're not allowed to use proportionate fair share. In fact, there's nothing in the code or the comp plan that says, we have the right to tell you that we're not going to let you use proportionate fair share. It is a process, because a road is deficient, and the county has created a pool of money that developers pay into, homeowners pay into, and then the county has a schedule of improvements that those dollars will be spent on. And as long as a developer pays the money, they're allowed to use proportionate fair share. So, the, and there's also case law that simply more traffic is not a legitimate basis to deny. There has to be a criterion in your code that states that you have the authority to say no. And I would respectfully submit that as it pertains to traffic, there is an out, which every property owner in 38 has the right to do, which is pay and go, which is what the state calls it. Beach access, we heard a lot tonight about where are these folks going to go to be, go to the beach. There is no county requirement that a development identify beach access, provide beach access. This is a concern that is not a regulatory hook. There is no criterion upon which the county can deny a project on beach access. It simply does not exist. Is it a concern of the community? Yes. Is it a regulatory criterion? No. Nothing in the plan, nothing in the code. We heard a concern about lighting. Mr. Carpenter provided you the maximums, I believe it was ten-foot candles and fifteen-foot candles, we're at five-foot candles. We are below the maximum that is allowed for lighting. Once again, this project meets your express written requirements of your Comprehensive Plan and your Land Development Code. Stormwater, we heard a lot about stormwater, and that's a hot topic, given the floods that we've had and the twenty-five inches of rain in three days. Submit, there's not a single project you can design in the world that would ever be able to address some of the rainfall events that we've had in Florida. The evidence before you is unrefuted that Mr. Jenkins has denied a project, excuse me, designed a project that it meets or exceeds the county's regulations for stormwater, and the county engineer has reviewed those plans and approved those plans. That is the sole obligation of an applicant, meet the code, and we have done so. There may be regional concerns, but those concerns do not provide a legitimate criterion upon which to base a denial. The plain language of your code has to be applied. The parking standards, I've heard stories of spring break, we've heard stories of three or four or five people showing up. That happens whether it's a multifamily project or a hotel. But your code specifically states one-point-one parking space. That's what we have provided, we have applied, we have complied with your code. I respectfully submit, you don't have the legal authority as a county to say, even though our code says, and you meet our code, we want you to do more. There's no language in your regulations that give the authority to deny a project because somebody didn't exceed the requirements that are published in the code. Compatibility, and if I could turn you to, let me get the right tab here, thirteen. If you would please turn to tab thirteen, it's the third page in, I've highlighted it, it's six-D. We have heard testimony and concerns about the character of 38 as a whole, the character of the community as a whole. Your code at six-D, page twenty-four of seventy-seven, has an express provision on how the county evaluates compatibility in a village mixed-use project. The scale and uses at the edge shall be compatible with the abutting neighborhood uses. So, the sole issue that needs to be addressed is the, or are, is the abutting issues. You've heard concerns about underage drinking, you've heard concerns about loitering, you've heard concerns about improper parking. The law is clear that speculative illegal uses or actions cannot form the basis for a denial. If that were so, every project that comes before you, that you have a concern that the neighbors aren't going to park correctly, or they're going to play their music too loudly, you could turn down every project on those concerns, and the courts have said, that's not a valid basis to deny, you can't assume illegal conduct. And when you look at the compatibility question, you have a church institutional use, you have a warehouse to the north, you have a strip center to the east. Your code actually does a nice job of defining compatibility, it's consistent with Florida law in chapter one sixty-three, part two, Florida statutes, which is that a new use would have to create an undue negative impact such that the existing uses could no longer continue to function as the existing use. There is nothing that I've heard tonight that would prevent the church from continuing to be a church. There is nothing that I've heard tonight that would preclude the warehouse, the storage facility, from continuing to serve as a storage facility. And I've heard nothing that said the retail center to the east could no longer continue to function as a retail center, in fact, they have more customers. And to the south, you have 38, which is the abutting use, and south of that is vacant VMU. And again, I need to stress, those land use decisions were made a long time ago. To the north, VMU, to the east, VMU, to the south, VMU, to the west, institutional. We're not talking about RPA, we're talking about some of your most intensive uses in your plan. You heard an argument about a lot split not being correct. And you saw a diagram up here. The time to challenge the inappropriate lot split was ten years ago. The county issued a development order, and that is at tab nine, if you would be kind enough to turn to tab nine. It was issued on April sixth, two thousand and four, one-point-nine-five acres. It's the northern lot. If there was an error at that time, this was a publicly noticed county commission meeting under Florida law, under chapter one sixty-three, point three-two-one-five Florida statutes. If somebody believes that a development order is inconsistent with the Comprehensive Plan, they have thirty days to challenge that development order. Failure to do so, the development order becomes valid, and the approval becomes valid. If they believe there is a violation of the Land Development Code, you get to file a petition for writ of certiorari under nine-point-one-hundred, the Rules of Appellate Procedure. There is a thirty-day window to do so. Failure to exhaust or to implement that remedy, you are foreclosed, and the project is legal. There's a saying in Florida, that even if a local government does the wrong thing, if nobody challenges it in thirty days, it's the right thing, and it's valid, and it's legal. So, for ten years, we've had two lots going east-west. We have a storage center that was built, that continues to operate, that presumably was inspected by the county, they issued a development order for it, they got their certificate of completion, they're functioning. If you turn to tabs ten and eleven, those were the printouts from the property appraiser, you'll notice each parcel has a property ID from the property appraiser. Each parcel has been paying property taxes on these parcels separately, not as one. If you turn to tab seven, there was a development order issued by the county on March seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen, for a minor development, for twenty-eight dwelling units at twelve units per acre. So, you have a situation where you have a northern lot that's had a storage center for, give or take, ten years. You've had the county collecting taxes for two separate lots for about ten years. You have another development order already issued on the southern parcel that was for the property going east-west. So, we would respectfully submit that the timeframe to raise this issue expired ten years ago, and it is not a legal basis to challenge. In fact, we would contend that the County Commission's approval of the development order in two thousand and four constituted the lot reconfiguration. Now, I've heard words used, I think, a little loosely. Your code calls a lot split, you take one parcel, you split it into two. A replat, under your definition, is you take two lots, you fuse them into one. What we have here is a reconfiguration of lot lines. This was not the creation of two new lots, instead of north-south, they went east-west. But the timeframe to say, hey, that violates the code somehow, has long gone. And under the doctrine both of the statute of limitations running, and latches, inequitable stoppable, we would submit that it would be highly inappropriate to deny an innocent third party purchasing the property now, to say that something that took place ten years ago that the county approved, you can't do anything. And I would submit that if that becomes the position of the county, are you going to close the storage center? Because they're on an illegal lot too, and are you going to refund the taxes that have been paid for ten years? I don't think the county would want to go down that path. Lastly, I've heard the County Commission, and I've heard past planning commissioners say, play by the rules. That a property owner has a right to rely on the rules, abide by those rules, do their due diligence by those rules, and they should be approved. My client has done exactly that. While it may not be what is desired, while it may be nine thousand people from, some from California, when I checked, signed a petition, the applause meter doesn't control. There is case law in Florida that says land use by applause meter is illegal. And we circle back to where I started tonight. The only thing that matters, not your subjective desires. Did my client, does my client, meet the written rules? The rules that are in the Comprehensive Plan, the rules that are in the Land Development Code, and I respectfully submit that you did not hear any evidence that indicated that a particular policy or a particular land development code was violated. You heard wishes and desires, but you didn't hear competent substantial evidence of the failure to comply with the county's rules. And I ask you tonight to recommend to the County Commission to approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a drainage question of the engineer? Can I ask a drainage question? Oh, we announced it, oh, okay.
We're going to close the public meeting now? No?
Could I issue a little rebuttal to this?
Actually, the code says the applicant has the last word, so.
Okay. I'm afraid you can't. We cannot do that, so the public meeting will be closed. Staff, do you have anything to add? Any questions that you might be able to answer that we might have ahead of time?
We believe that the applicant has met the minimum requirements of the Land Development Code and the Comprehensive Plan.
Okay. Commissioners?
I have some of Scott on drainage. What was the water table this summer? I know a lot about drainage because I have edge water, so.
Right.
Real familiar with drainage problems. What was the water table this summer in that area?
I don't know. We didn't do a test this summer. We actually did. We actually did one just recently for the county, at the county's request, in two different locations on our site, the north and the south side. On the north side, water table was deeper than ten feet. On the south side, it was nine foot, three inches deep, from the existing grade.
Okay. But we've had a lot of dry weather compared to what we had there for three or four months.
I think it was probably still over.
And I know the water table at edge water was three and a half feet, so it was pretty shallow. I know the sock pipes. I'm real familiar with that. When the water table's high, it goes in the holes, and no water can go down, and so everything just backs up everywhere. If you get, not just a hundred-year storm, but if you get two weeks of rain, like we had, I have major concerns about the flooding. I've been on thirty A when it floods. I've heard the people that swim out of their houses. I have four million dollars' worth of damage to edge water we're fixing now because of the drainage and the flooding from other properties to us. And it's not a pleasant thing when your property floods. And I'm just, I have real major concerns about the drainage underneath. And when we get rain and the water table comes up, yes, I would imagine the water table at edge water now is probably, our lake is down over eleven feet right now. But when the summer was here, our lake was overflowing into our driveway all the time. So I just have real concerns about this project draining. And if I already have flooding, and y'all designed something across for me that isn't going to hold, I'm going to be concerned. And so I have, can you assure me that this is not, is not going to put any water on to make any of the water problems? The county's already had to hire engineers for each section. And this is a critical section. And they are paying now for the study. So I'm just, I can't get my hands around how we, how an underground sock pipe system is going to fix and not astrobate the problem.
Well, to answer your question, the first thing is that when we design a system like this, we design to the groundwater and the seasonal high for that area, basically. And that is the highest seasonal average of the groundwater. And then we provide some separation between that and the bottom of our exfiltration system, so that we won't have a situation where groundwater impacts it. A lot of times, some of the older systems were done more as French drains, sort of to catch side flow and divert it other places. These are true exfiltration systems where it stores it, lets it perk down into the ground after it's retained. I can assure you that we have designed this site to exceed anything required in the code, including the hundred-year storm event. We exceed all the requirements associated with the being in a coastal dune lake watershed. And this site is actually kind of at the crest of the basin out here. So it's really going to be a self-contained system. So I can assure you, we've exceeded any requirement, and the county staff and their engineers have thoroughly reviewed the project, and I think they would say the same.
What was the seasonal high water table this year? What was the lowest, highest water table we had this year?
I don't know in this area.
I thought it was, maybe I misunderstood. And Scott, I have a lot of respect for you and your ability with drainage. I think you're one of the best, but.
Thank you.
You just, didn't you just say that it was designed to meet the seasonal water table?
Yes, ma'am. I thought you meant the entire county.
High water table?
What was the seasonal high water table on this area, right here, in thirteen and fourteen? On our site specifically, the seasonal high was about two feet above what the highest spot was, so it would have been about seven, seven foot, three inches, roughly.
Okay. Let me see if I have any more. I have a question, but it's not for you. It's for the developer.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. While I was sitting here, I was figuring the square footage of this room. So if everybody saw me counting the little ceiling tiles, that's kind of what I was doing. This room is four hundred square feet, or a little more than four hundred. So what, you have six hundred square feet of commercial. Is that correct? Well, it's thirty, those ceiling tiles are two feet each. And there's thirty of them long, and that doesn't count this. There's thirty long, and they're fourteen across. So I want to know what's going in the commercial space. Is it going to be one big room? Is it going to be one big room that's going to have, like rented for weddings? Is it going to be separate commercial space? Can you tell me what the commercial space is going to be?
Our ideal was, Ms. Harris, was that we would have an area to sell suntan oil, to rent bicycles, to do that, to have services that service our hotel.
So it's not retail for the community? It's just?
Well, if somebody wants to come in and rent a bike, or buy shirts, or do whatever, sure.
Mr. Chairman?
Y'all, please keep the noise down where everybody can hear.
So it's mainly, it's mainly like a hotel, where you could go downstairs, or a motel, where you go downstairs and you can buy snacks and stuff for your room. You can buy Coax and Seven Ups if you're sitting at the pool.
Actually, the Hampton Inn's have a concession area inside the lobby.
Okay. So it won't be a concession area?
No, ma'am. It's basically where people can buy, I mean, I actually was thinking about how, you know, it's going to be separately deeded. It's not going to be owned by the hotel group, and it's going to be used for, you know, my, our thought process was, was to use it for people to buy shirts, rent bicycles, suntan lotion, post-cock.
You don't sell that in the concession in the hotel, in the Hampton Inn, in the lobby?
The one in the lobby that I've seen, basically, is just drinks.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Mr. Regan, before you step down, you said drinks. I want to make sure the record is clear. Does the Hampton Inn serve alcohol?
No. It's one of the reasons that we chose the Hampton. It's the number-one family hospitality franchise in the United States. It doesn't sell alcohol.
What about your six hundred and sixty square feet? Are you selling beer and wine there?
No. We're not allowed.
Right. Because you're close to the church?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I think that's all I have.
Any other commissioners have any comments or questions? No? Mr. Davis, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
On this lot split thing. What is your take on that, or what's your opinion?
I'm a little confused. I'm a little confused about how it came about. One of the questions I was going to ask, Mac, can you tell me how it came about that we have two lots here? I'm a little confused about how that happened.
None of us were here when this happened.
Yeah.
This is more than ten years ago. There were two lots. There was a proposed lot split to reconfigure the lots. And from what I understand, from others who may have been here, is that there was a lot split applied for and a development order application applied for. They were moving simultaneously on separate tracks. The lot split got denied. The development order application continued to move all the way to the Board of County Commissioners and received Board of County Commissioner approval.
Which left the other lot, essentially.
Which left the other lot as future development. It was mortgaged separately. It was subsequently foreclosed on and went back to a bank, and went through the foreclosure disposition process, and was sold to a new owner unrelated to the original owner.
It appears to me the county approved a lot split by approving the development order. I don't know how else you could look at that, frankly. I mean, I understand the argument, because we don't allow folks to divide property without, you've seen the illegal lot splits, but apparently this lot split was done through a development order, if I'm understanding the factual situation.
Done by default, basically. Because they didn't take any other action.
Well, I call it by default. It was applied for, denied, and then apparently done through a development order. It appears to me, and I'm, that's.
When I say default, I mean they didn't directly address it. They just approved what made it happen.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's an unusual situation. I don't know that I've ever seen that situation.
Very unusual. No comments? Nope? Tom, you have a comment, or you'll make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. Based upon the evidence that's been presented to the planning commission tonight, I would move for approval of this thing, move it forward to the county commissioners.
Is there a second?
How second?
There is a second discussion. I'll start out, if nobody else wants to. First of all, like I say, I'm all for property rights and believe people have a right to do what they can and what's legal on their property. I do not think, and I understand the letter of the law when it comes to village mixed use. I think six hundred square foot of commercial in this size development is, I just don't think that's, that, in my opinion, meets what should be done in this type of development. I think you need more. I think it's going to be mixed use. It should be truly mixed use. That's my opinion.
I agree with you, but unfortunately, the way the rules are written right now, it doesn't take into account that.
I understand. But we're not, I think what's important for us to understand is, we're not making a final decision. We're making a recommendation. It's up to the county commission to make a final decision.
Right. I think there's been a lot of things that have been brought up tonight that need to be addressed.
I do, too.
It looks like there's a lot of holes in the development, Land Development Code that need to be addressed, and they're going to continue to come up as development along thirty A is there. And I think this is something that needs to be addressed with the commissioners. We don't have the power to do that.
Nope.
But the commissioners do, and I would suggest that all of you get together and get with your commissioner, and let your voices be heard there, because this is something that's going to need to be addressed.
Yeah. Unfortunately, we don't have the authority to do a lot of the things you want us to do. I wish we did sometimes, and sometimes I'm glad we can't. But.
Mr. Chairman, I heard a lot of arguments tonight that I was, that I was, felt in my heart, they had the right arguments. However, as Mr. Theriault pointed out very, very clearly, we can, as planning commissioners here, we only have one, two things to go by. That's the Land Development Code and the Comprehensive Plan. This particular project fits the Land Development Code and the Comprehensive Plan. Some of the other things, I think there were some very valid points brought up by some of the people who came forward tonight, and I applaud them for bringing these arguments forward. But I think that this particular venue here tonight, the planning commission, is not the place to address them. Need to bring them to the county commissioners and bring it up that the Land Development Code and the planning, the Land Development Code is lacking in some areas. And we do need to bring them up. We do need to have a change. We do need to have it looked at again. And this is not the first time this has happened before us. And it's happened many times. And there are some stuff in that Land Development Code and Comprehensive Plan that need to be looked at very closely. And I think even the planning department here understands that, and I think they agree with it. But our position tonight is we have to go with what we have.
Well, I think the planning staff has done outstanding.
I do, too. I do, too. Again, I think.
They're limited by the code.
They are limited by the code, but I think that they also have expressed before that there are places in the Land Development Code and the, that need to be looked at. But this is not the place for it. We're bound tonight to go with what we have. The evidence that was presented before us, the Land Development Code and the Comprehensive Plan is very clear, as Mr. Theriault pointed out, very effectively, I might add. So I don't see that we have any choice.
I don't think we have to approve the traffic buyout. I know the code says we can approve the traffic buyout. But I don't think there's any law that says we have to approve it, that everybody automatically gets it. If that is the law, Mark, you need to tell me. But I don't believe that everybody just automatically gets a traffic buyout. And if that's what we have to do until the rules are changed, you're going to have every developer anywhere around up here wanting to build everything they can build on thirty A with a traffic buyout. And then you have one hell of a mess.
I agree. Mark, is that, Mark, is that traffic buyout permissive, or is it?
The comp, the comp plan says, when a permit is issued, the necessary facilities and services are guaranteed by participation in the county-adopted proportional fair share methodology. That's what it says.
So it is?
It says it's guaranteed.
There's something that needs to be changed. I agree with Ms. Harris. It needs to be changed, but we can't change it here tonight.
Can we put, can we put a?
County commissioners.
Can we put a condition on the motion, Tom? Not a condition, but a stipulation.
Why are we asking, Tom? Let's ask Mark. Let's ask the attorney.
Well, it's his motion.
Well, you're limited to, I feel like this thing is not on. You're limited to making a recommendation of the commission to accept, reject. You can recommend to the commission, move it forward, accept it, reject it, or accept it with conditions. And you certainly can do that.
Well, I wouldn't necessarily say commission, conditions. How about recommendations, or?
Well, you can, but we use a funny lawyer term. They're precatory. They have no force of effect.
Right.
You can certainly.
But we can let them know what our thoughts are.
Absolutely.
As part of that recommendation.
Ms. Harris, Ms. Minshew's night can go forward to the.
Mark, are you telling us that we have no option but to vote yes for this because it meets the criteria? Is that what you're telling us?
I'm telling you that you have to make your decision based on the evidence that was presented tonight, and whether or not it meets the Land Development Code and the Comprehensive Plan. That's the standard that courts have uniformly upheld throughout.
But we have in the past, Mark, excuse me, but in the past, we have placed recommendations at the end of motions.
We can't hear.
You need to turn your mic on.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
And I don't have a problem.
In the past, we have.
You just, I just want to make sure you understand they're, they have.
It doesn't hold any weight with the county commissioners, okay? But we can tell them, hey, look, we're approving this, but here's something that we think needs to be looked at closely.
Sure. You can do that. Absolutely.
Okay. I think that's what.
What I would like to add to that, then, is understanding what the letter of the law is on the village mixed use, is the intent of the law, or the spirit of the law being met with a six hundred square foot retail space.
Well, then put that on the end of my.
That's what I just asked to be done.
That would be a motion to amend the motion.
Motion to amend the motion to say just what I said.
I have no objection to amending my motion for that.
Can you addie to second on that?
I have no objection to that. Second.
Okay. Any more discussion?
Okay. So Sally, are you also second in the Teddy's discussion? And that's to include, to include what you amended it to?
I'm just adding a statement. It's not, I guess it is amendment to the motion, but it's just a statement to the motion, saying that recognizing the letter of the law may have been met by the six hundred square foot commercial space. Is the spirit and intent of the law being met with that six hundred square foot of commercial space?
And I guess, Mark, I have one other question. Why do we, as a planning board, have any kind of meeting? If we get something from them that says this meets the letter of the law, why do all these people show up and come from out of town to speak? And, I mean, if we have no, if we have no option, when they say it meets the letter of the law, it doesn't even need to come before us. It just needs to go straight on to the commissioners. I mean, this is a waste of their time, and it. I mean, this is a waste of their time, and as far as I'm concerned, mine.
Ms. Harris, you don't have. You're not bound to agree with their conclusions. There's nothing that says you're bound to agree with their conclusions. But your disagreement, just so we're clear, your disagreement has to be based on the evidence presented and the code and the comprehensive plan. We've had a number of times in the year that I've been here where we have disagreed with their conclusions.
Mm-hmm.
So you're not bound, just because they say it does, doesn't mean you're bound to agree with that conclusion.
Any more discussion?
All right.
Sally?
Is it clear to the audience that whether we move for approval or deny, it still goes to the county commissioner?
Right.
So this is not, if we were to deny, it's not an end to the project, because I've heard several people say, stop it here. It does not, under any circumstances, stop here.
We don't have the ability to do that, so. Call for question, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, three to two.
I move for a, for a one. I move for adjournment.
Nothing else on the agenda? We stand adjourned.
Who takes the candy?
I do.
There you go.
Somebody else ate it now.
We've got a grandson to feed.
I'm a big guy, start today.
We've got a grandson to feed.
Tom, I'll send it back to you.
Huh?
That handout on the parking study?
It came back.
What do we do with it?
I'll leave it here, I'll leave it.
Okay, she. Thanks, sir.
I'll leave it, I'll leave it here.
I saw that, I looked at that, and I said, oh, man. She was, she was basically a planner, and they showed her in that position.
I'll tell you, Dave, we're just trying to stay. We don't have a choice.
Oh, I, I.
She are, we are judges, we are studying to evidence.
I don't disagree with you. I don't disagree with you.
We might, we might be mistaken. I've seen that thirteen years that I've been on.
I agree, I agree.
Thirteen years I've been here, and saying over and over and over certain things and everything has changed.
At some point, they can have to make.
We don't have the authority to do this.
No, we don't. No, we don't, no, we don't.
And we have told the county commission, if asked questions, questions.
He didn't know what he was doing either. He probably.
This is a.
Yeah, this is a tough one. I mean, if we had a legitimate reason, I probably would have looked at it and asked it, but as soon as I just did, she gave a grandstand. Because there's no way you can say. They, they went, I don't think I've ever seen them act as though they've been here. There's a lot of stuff, and they pointed out a bunch of them. And this is just going to get worse. It's going to get worse, it's really going to start. It didn't matter as much.
You know, it didn't matter all those years if nobody could. I want that chair, I want the guard that has my chair. I want. Every time I. I cannot.
It's going to be terrible, they're right.
If I lay back, then my feet don't touch the floor. And if I, so all night, I can sit right up at the edge of the table to be able to. Scott, as far as I'm concerned, no drainage, you're the best. You are the best, and I did want you to think, I didn't want you to think it was a slam at you, but, but in all the hell I've been through, I do understand that, I do understand. There's, um.